Good. All right, welcome everybody to Thursday, February 22nd, meeting of the Sheldon Planning Commission. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
All right, move my deck, second by Kate. Agenda is approved, all in favor? Thank you. Is that an I?
Yeah.
All right. All right. So, agenda is approved. Just to make a comment, we know that two of the sections that we were looking at talking about were being led, one by Andrew, one by Perry, so we can still talk through it and if we get into the weeds, we can defer until they're back. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the meeting on February 8th. We have a motion to approve.
Would make the motion.
Second?
All right. Motion by Dick, second by Kate, any discussion?
Nope.
Yeah. The only one I had was on page three, right before updates. The paragraph that talks about following further discussion, the planning commission agreed to decrease the average growth to 50 or fewer people per year. Instead of just that saying growth targets or something, because it just, when I first read it, I thought that we were having some firm limit of, hey, we need 50 people a year or something, and that was part of the discussion.
So you want us to insert target after growth?
I'm open to thoughts, that was just how I read it, and it seemed...
Decrease the average growth.
It does sound like, you know, we bar the door.
Right, like, we hit 50 people, no more, we're done.
Yeah.
Or if we have 40, we find two more people.
To an average of, oh, it says an average, average growth.
It does. If everyone else is fine with it, I'm not nitpicky, it was just a reaction.
I thought that number's a little, but I mean, this is what the minute said, so...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I don't care.
Yeah, it's fine. And then, really nitpicky was as part of eight under neighborhood development area. The neighborhood development area in TICs, one of the TICs was after the A.
Good show.
Just to show that I actually read these.
That's like an Andrew tip, come on.
Right.
That's probably, my eyes don't read.
Any other comments on the minutes from last week? Or last meeting? All right, all in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Meeting minutes from last time approved. Do we have any disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none? All right, next one is open to the public. Have any comments from anybody?
This is, I don't want to jump ahead of anyone in line, but...
Comments on, comments on stuff that's not on the agenda?
Correct, anything that's not in the agenda, we can, if it's on an agenda item, then we can address that when we hit it.
And Frank, if you haven't signed in, please do, Nate, if you haven't signed in, please, there is a sheet.
So, well, it's all right.
Yeah, please, yeah.
So, if I can pass these to Dean to pass out, that's all right. So, my name is Nate Burris, I live here in Shelburne, of course. Grew up here in Shelburne, actually went to Shelburne Public Schools, I think this may have been my third grade classroom, back when this was the elementary school. Live here now with my wife and Houston, her toddler. It's away for over a while, recently moved back to accept a job here in Burlington. And have come to familiarize myself with the zoning bylaws for a variety of different reasons. And the materials that I'm sending around right now include a proposed amendment to those bylaws. They look like a lot of paper, but this is actually really simple and straightforward, it's one sentence, so I don't want anyone to be too overwhelmed by it. And really, the one sentence would address a very narrow and limited issue or area, which would be conditional uses of recreation areas in the rural district, that were proposed to limit the cutting of vegetation in those areas. I think this has both a principal aspect and also a practical aspect, and I would note that the proposal would be limited to commercial uses. And as I went through the process of trying to come up with this proposal and drafting it, I looked to the town plan and read through it extensively, and one of the things that I noticed and have incorporated in the reporting form, which is at the back of the packet that you have, are some of the goals of the town plan and the objectives, as well as the means by which those goals and objectives could be achieved. And so, I've detailed those there. My hope, recognizing that this is the first time that you're seeing this, is that it is simple enough, being a single sentence, that the commission would be able to vote on, warning a hearing, and certainly, you know, at that hearing, further discussion and deliberation could occur, but that's sort of my introductory summation.
And if I can interject, the reason why I have it on the computer is because Nate has emailed me the material, and the reason he emailed the material is because he and I have talked about it, and the reason why it's formatted the way that it is, is because essentially I've given him examples, because he indicated what his idea was to get the planning commission to consider the possibility of warning a hearing in the most expeditious way possible, and I said, well, one way to do that would be to prepare the documents that would normally be prepared. So that's why there's a memo. I didn't actually draft the memo that you have, but it's the type I normally prepare, and so he's done all the legwork, basically, although I did not prepare this memo, it's what would go out in the event, let's say that I had worked with you for the last, you know, whatever period of time, and it's how I would transmit this proposal, the way that is required. Similarly, I usually prepare a bylaw change report. I gave Nate an example, he prepared, he prepared the report, and you rarely, if ever, see the legal notice, but I gave him a copy of this, of the legal notice, and he prepared, he adapted one that had been used before, and similarly, he adapted a version of the motions, so. And his inquiry to me about all this came after the agenda had been set.
Yeah, well, I think that the material is packaged well. I think my one question is, with regard to the added sentence, is, what is the problem that we're looking to, like, is there an actual issue that's happening now?
So, it of course would be prospective, in that, you know, existing uses wouldn't be affected, because, you know, existing, we wouldn't be retroactively punishing anyone for vegetation or trees that has already been cleared, but it's aimed at preserving those existing forests, woodlands. You know, the town plan talks about a variety of reasons why that's important, and this would, I think, serve to facilitate and accomplish those reasons. So it would be prospective.
So does this, does this apply to, like, does this apply to a particular area, or is this just...
This is the rural district, and any conditional uses that would be categorized as recreational uses, and specifically, commercial recreational uses. So, you know, if there's a public walking path, and a tree needs to be cleared to facilitate the public's access to be able to walk through the woods, we of course want to promote that, because that facilitates the public's enjoyment of the natural resources. But conversely, if there is some commercial use that would propose to clear cut a forest, that would prohibit that, because we want to preserve the natural resources. And so it is a very narrow issue.
Right, I'm just wondering if we don't have, I mean, do we not have, what's the use case that this would save, that we don't already have a regulation for? Is, not trying to challenge, I just, I'm not quite clear.
Well, it's difficult to speculate what the use case would be that doesn't address this, but I think, in the instance where there is a commercial use in the rural district that is a recreational use, that proposes to clear a woodland area, that by my read of the bylaws, is not prohibited right now.
So using an example, if there happened to be a golf course or something, and they wanted to add a hole, that they have the land and they happen to be in the rural area, and this would basically be a line of defense against them being able to clear cut anything to add that hole?
I think that's a very good example.
Okay.
What about a bridle path, if someone owns horses and has bridle paths on their own property with this?
That wouldn't, this wouldn't affect that at all, because that wouldn't be a commercial use, there wouldn't be...
Unless they're providing lessons, or camps, or...
Right. But it could well be, if you have a stable or, or your board horses.
There's probably some commercial element to it.
And certainly, the commission, for today's purposes, you know, I'm just requesting that we move to the next step, warn the hearing, and those issues can all be fleshed out further in public, considered with notice and warning. I think you raised very good points, and I don't suggest that I have all of the answers, this is just my initial proposal, that I think addresses what I perceive to be an important issue.
So we're actually still working on the rural area? So can't we just incorporate this discussion into the rural area discussion?
Well, Dick, when you say you're working on the rural area, do you mean as part of the future land use plan, and this is a zoning proposal?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think what's hanging me up, and I'm open to any help if I'm blundering here, but I'm, if this is for the purpose of commercial conditional outdoor recreational uses, then it doesn't apply to residential outdoor uses. So, this is strictly for commercial conditional outdoor rec uses, but if, if it is conditional, then it needs to go through a process to be approved to do whatever that conditional use is. I mean, I don't know if I'm, I'm just wondering if we're adding layers where our, I mean, this is, this would be actually codifying something that I imagine the DRB would be approving or disproving in terms of the conditional use.
We'd have to look at the rest of the zoning in that.
And I would just note, there are, in other districts, I don't know that there's a direct corollary, but for instance, in the Conservation District, there is a passage, like 1330.2, or, I'm probably not getting the number right, but there's a passage that talks about any uses that would affect waters or change the nature of forests, and so there is, for lack of a better term, precedent in the bylaws for something just like this. I think that the, you, I think I'll probably know this far better than I do, but the idea behind the conditional use is that there are of course permitted uses, then there are uses that can be permitted conditionally, and then there are things that are not permitted. And so this would take what is perhaps a conditional use and move it, you know, very narrow way into a category of things that are no longer conditionally, potentially approved conditionally, but are just simply not permitted.
Yeah, and I understand that, but when I, rereading this, I can't, I mean, what, what commercial conditional outdoor rec use would not have to change the landscape in some way?
Well, I think that the idea behind it is that, if you look at the town plan and the goals and objectives of the plan as it pertains to the rural district, the plan is pretty clear that it doesn't want that to happen, and so this is just facilitating that objective, that, you know, if there are outdoor recreational uses that, you know, are seeking a site, then certainly there are other districts in which they could potentially look, but so far as the plan has been drafted, it suggests that this wouldn't be an appropriate use for the rural district.
I guess I'm wondering why commercial, I mean, can't people do this privately, and it's just as annoying?
And certainly if the commission was equally as offended by private use, you know...
But if they clear another horse field, or clear, I mean, I, I'm wondering why private citizens wouldn't be...
So would this, would this have an impact if somebody...
Can impact agriculture.
Had a farm and wanted to clear some land?
Right, but what if it's just for kicks?
How would that, I mean, because we have, we've got this kind of blurring of agriculture and, you know, value-added uses. I wouldn't want to impede someone's, we want to have those types of uses in the rural area, we don't want them to be annoying residents who live there, but, you know, we have to find a balance between not preventing somebody to earn a livelihood, you know, because we're trying, I mean, ultimately, what we're trying to do is to not have our rural areas start looking like South Burlington, just loaded with subdivisions, so, you know...
I don't know that I can give you a definitive answer, Kate, but I would express some concern, or at least awareness of the limitations on bylaws that are in statute. So, towns can have zoning, but they're severely limited when it comes to regulating civil, civil cultural practices, or the old 4495 ag practices, or what we used to call AAPs, we now call RAPs. I haven't looked at the RAPs recently enough to know just where, taking what was, say, a pasture that has started to grow up, and we have a farmer in the room, so maybe he can comment on it, but I don't, I don't want to say that sometimes that type of activity would be done consistent with the RAPs, and once it's covered by the RAPs, the zoning won't, won't affect it. So, regardless of what the language says, it would be put aside in the event it qualifies under the RAPs. Similarly, if there's a civil cultural practice that the law says that zoning can't restrict, then we won't be able to restrict it. But, that's about as much as I will say, without having done any kind of research on it.
Okay.
If I can just say, in terms of the question of restricting farming, this certainly is not intended to do that, and I don't think it would. The list of conditional uses in this section, this is number 21, and so there are a variety of very specific uses, marinas, this is just outdoor recreation uses, and it's, does have language that says including, but not limited to, but it does give some examples, and I think those examples are very distinct and different from farming.
I'd like to take time to review the reg.
I would as well.
Read it, and see what else is in there, and then maybe discuss whether we want to put it on the agenda at the next meeting.
Yeah, is this something that we could, I mean, the way it's presented is fantastic, like, this is, this is great, it's got the main stuff we need, but I think, is this something where we could have in the packets for next time?
Yeah, absolutely.
A bit more around this?
Absolutely, yeah, and, yes, is the short answer, absolutely.
Because in terms of, in terms of warning this, I see the language here has it warned for March 22nd, so, I mean...
Well, I, what, you need to adopt a motion to schedule a hearing so that it would be warned, and that would then occur. What I'm hearing, at least one of you say, is that it needs more discussion before you're ready to do that, and in order to have that discussion, you want it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right, yeah.
I guess I'm curious if there is a sense of urgency regarding timing?
I think there could be, and that's certainly an issue that is in play in a lot of instances, and I think in this one, that is a pertinent observation. One proposal I could make to try to maybe satisfy that concern, as well as the concern that you articulated, is that if the commission were to vote to warn the hearing, it's not proposed, because statutorily, the time between now and the next hearing is insufficient, it would be warned for the 22nd, you would still have the 8th to discuss the proposal, and certainly the commission has, you know, prerogative to, you know, address its agenda in whatever way it sees fit. And so that is maybe a middle ground where you can discuss it just as you want to at the next meeting, and then it is properly warned for the 22nd.
Yeah, I think, well, just based on how things have flowed in the past, this would be a first, I think, for, like, receiving material at a meeting and immediately warning for being able to do that. I mean, the vibe that I'm getting, I don't know that I'm alone, is that we should discuss this a bit more with a bit more context before...
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree.
And something like this doesn't, even if we did do this, you're looking at three months, probably at the earliest, before something like this could go through the system, and then it would have to go to the select board.
Not to say it's not possible, but to be able to get this on the agenda for next time, to have a bit more context around it, to be able to have enough detailed discussion to then warn, and, I mean, if, if all of that goes, goes well, then it would, I mean, as far as the overall process, it would just be injecting two weeks, effectively, right?
Yeah, and the warning is for the public, it's saying that we've found that we want to warn this item, because we think it's worthy, and we don't know that yet.
And typically, we would have discussed it before we warned it.
Right.
Yeah.
I think those are all very reasonable observations and considerations.
Yeah, but definitely appreciate putting this together, and if Dean has this on the agenda next time with additional context, then we'll, you know, debate it and can make the call.
Great.
You've helped to accelerate the...
Absolutely.
The process.
Well, I appreciate your time in considering it, and I'll look forward to hearing more of your thoughts and discussing it further.
Absolutely, yeah, thanks for putting this together.
Thank you.
If there is something specific that you're concerned about, I'd want to know, because, for example, Quiniasca is, gave us a hoped-for date, when they were hoping to expand their building, and we were responsive, and, so I'm just, if there is something looming that you're aware of, that you're concerned about, and that's why you're here today, I would like to be aware of that.
Sure, and I'm not trying to hide anything, so I'll answer that directly, and that's why I said your mention of the golf course was appropriate. My understanding from Quiniasca is that they are seeking to expand the existing course, since they're losing holes on the west side of Spear Street, they need more space, and so there's a 13-acre portion of woods and wetlands in the rural district, where they are, as I understand it, proposing to construct new golf holes, and this would require clearing of that 13 acres of woods. This would address that issue.
That's really helpful, thank you.
That is really helpful, yeah, my concern is just counterbalancing by, yes, like, this specifically could address that specific need, but it could hinder a lot of other things, so I just want to make sure that we balance it out and understand any potential consequences, and that we could be a bit more targeted in the discussion.
Of course, and I think balance is always important.
Yeah. But yeah, well, thank you very much, though, this is good.
Thank you, I appreciate all your time.
You bet.
And just a question for Dean, if they were, in fact, to do that, they would still need to go to DRB when they, for an expansion, or would they not?
When you, when you say they, you mean...
Golf course.
Quiniasca, if they are to do the project that Nate was talking about?
Right.
Yes, it would, it would involve a DRB review.
And wouldn't they need state approval for a, if they're a wetland, if they're going to be in a wetland?
Well, yeah, I mean, all the normal things like wetlands, if someone is affecting a wetland, the wetland regulations would come into play.
Which is another opportunity for...
Actu 50 for a property that large.
Yeah, there are many more opportunities to...
Stormwater would come into play.
Impact the process, yeah, as a interested party, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good to call attention to, though, and have, have something like this ready.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, next item is into the comprehensive plan, and the first item there is the land use.
Yeah, so, oops. So would you like me to just jump into that slide presentation, or this?
Sure.
Yeah, that'd be good.
In putting together the package for the meeting, I threw together some of the ideas that I was thinking about, that touched on the sub-elements having to do with the comprehensive plan, and that includes future land use, the whole public works capacity issue that came up as a result of the discussing growth, then growth and development, which was going to be the group talking about the edits, or the section that Perry has been working on, maybe putting a final bow around that number of 50 or thereabouts. Housing was going to finally be on the docket, and that is the section that Perry has been working on. And then the last thing has to do with this visual preference survey idea. So, anyway, that's what I was ready to share some slides on, which you've had in your packets. To talk about future land use, I thought it was important for people to be reminded that this has been discussed going back to August 10, and also mid-November on the 14, when there were discussions of the policies that affect the portion of the town outside the growth area. Later in September, there was, there was a discussion of hamlets, and there was also some, the first time that you had seen this kind of rough-cut build-out map, talked about the build-out map a little bit more. Again, this is about future land use in the town. On October 30th, there was even more discussion of this at the retreat, where you talked more about hamlets, and I think it's important to remember the possible modification of the future land use map, or insertion of an additional map into the comprehensive plan to convey some of the ideas that you might have about future land use. My understanding had been that the likely next steps would be, you're going to keep the future land use map in the plan, possibly reformat it, there was some interest at one point, going back to when Jamie was still on the planning commission, about using a different format, maybe borrowing, or getting inspired by how South Burlington was doing it. This idea of a supplemental map that showed some alternative approach could be added. And then the work on the policies, and we would update them to show, or to discuss, tee up, however you want to put it, the potential for alternative patterns, including hamlets. Why was I, why was I concerned about reviewing that? There was discussion at the last meeting about growth and development numerically, in terms of, you know, how many people, and, and that's intertwined with the future land use pattern, without a doubt, but it's important to remind ourselves that you can have a clustered growth pattern that is a low total population, you can have a low total population as well, and it can be diffused. Similarly, you can have a high total population with everything clustered, and you could have a high total population, and things are diffused. So, there, one is not necessarily the result of the other, and so while I think it's really important to acknowledge the connection between the future land use pattern, I don't, and growth, I don't think that it necessarily means you have to resolve the future land use growth pattern in order to say, this is our growth goal, in terms of the number of people, or the numbers of households. We've had some discussion about scenarios and growth patterns, and I just wanted to also remind people that as part of this growth impact tool that was created a few years ago, never really fully refined, there were some growth scenarios created. One was the so-called trend, which used, used the map that we have now in our future land use plan. There was another one that dialed back on the amount of growth in the rural area, and there's not much growth allowed in the Conservation Area, but it dialed back on what could happen in the rural area, which is normally, you know, on the left-hand side, it's yellow, it goes away under the midline, but what we think of as the sewer service area, that area that's got the Route 7 corridor, and the areas that are along Spear Street to the west, that would, that's part of the... would, that's part of the midline scenario. And then there was a third scenario that was really saying the growth in Shelburne should be along the Route 7 corridor in the village and, in the area south, so it dials it back even further. So, the idea is, on the left-hand side, diffuse, middle, less diffuse, on the right-hand side, clustered, compact to the extreme. And when we, when we look at the outputs of this scenario model, you probably can't see these, but the amount of land that's consumed in this clustered is, it's about a fifth of what is under the diffuse pattern. But what's more important is that the total amount of growth that's represented is, oops, I thought I had, yeah. The amount of growth that the model said, this is actually a six. So you have about 1,600 people in that clustered, you have about 1,550 in that middle, and you have about 1,500 in that diffuse. This is like beating a dead horse, just to make the point again, that you can have the same number of people, the same amount of growth, and it can take a lot of different forms. So, shifting over to the future land use policies and the map and the growth, they should reinforce each other, but they can stand alone, they have standalone value. And the question really, how should we grow? Where should we grow? How fast should we grow? When should we stop growing? You can, you can, you can break apart a bit. That was all I was going to say about future land use. And now switch over to public works a bit, and just make the point about what the plan says about growth and public works in the plan. Right now, the plan's got a pretty consistent message about how growth needs to be in line with the public facilities and services that we have. It shouldn't, if we were over-capacity in our facilities, or at-capacity, I should say, with our, our facilities and services, growth should slow down until we catch up with the capacity. And that, that's in fact happened. Dick can remember the time when we were at-capacity with the wastewater treatment plants, and there was essentially a queue of development that was backing up. And then when the capacity came online, then there was a push for development because there'd been this backlog.
Two-year warranty.
Yeah, but the policy is pretty clear that we don't want growth, we don't want essentially to be forced to grow when we don't have the capacity. And where we, the future land use plan and things like the service areas for where we will have sewers, they should reinforce each other, they should match. So, that's really the core of the future land use map, is the fact that we have a series of districts that line up with the sewer service area. The sewer service area, the sewer service area kind of got settled, made very, very, very firm first, and it carried over into the plan, but they've worked together. Okay, after having talked about that general policy, people were wondering, what information do we have about things like the wastewater treatment plants and the schools? What information do we have that tells us where we are as far as capacity is concerned? So, I pulled together some information on the wastewater treatment side, because along with schools, those are really the, the biggies as far as public services or facilities that will most often constrain growth. So Shelburne has two wastewater treatment plants. They're, they're getting, and typically, a capacity of wastewater plants is planned in 20-year blocks, it's a convention. Plant one, which is off of Crown Road, which is north of Bay Road, has a capacity of 440,000 gallons of treatment a day, in terms of volume. Plant two, which is down, just down the road here, is a bit larger, it's 660,000 gallons per day. So, that's, that's the amount of capacity that we're permitted for. And there's been a study done recently that was prepared mostly to look at the idea of connecting the two services. Because there are two plants, there are two service areas, and that's really inefficient. So we have capacity on both sides, both plants, but it's also more expensive to run two plants. And so this study was looking at some alternatives, and it's, it's a relatively new study, I haven't had a chance to go through it, but they, as part of preparing it, they compiled a lot of this information. So, the, the capacity numbers are at the top, the amount of usage for each of the plants is at the last two bullets, and plant one, again, up on Crown Road, is about 58% of hydraulic capacity over a four-year period, and plant two is about 53. So, I might have mentioned at the last meeting that when plants reach 80% of capacity, the state says to the operator of the plant, the municipality typically, you have to start planning your next expansion because you're getting close to capacity. We're not in that situation right now, based on this number, these numbers. There are different facets of capacity. The, the hydraulic capacity is, is kind of the, I think, most intuitive, but as you can see, I've got some parentheses or parentheticals. The phosphorus, in a sense, our allowance for phosphorus, we're actually, we're lower, we're at 22% or 20%, depending on the plan. Does that all make any sense to folks? Okay.
What does BOD mean?
Biological oxygen demand, so it's the, people talk about high-strength waste. So, companies that are dealing with milk products, the waste will put a lot of stress on, if you're using a system, chemical or bacterial, it will really stress, and a slug of that type of high-strength waste can really upset. So the system has to be ready to deal with that high-strength waste. So it's a, it's another measurement of the treatment capacity. So, as more and more communities have become homes for things, well, you know, years ago, dairy processing, but some of that's coming back, or beer-making is another, where there's concern about high-strength waste. It doesn't, doesn't seem to be really a, yeah, I'm, I'm going to leave that alone for now, but that's what BOD is, biological oxygen demand. So, this report that I mentioned, that was prepared, looking at tying together the systems, had some growth, yeah, had a growth forecast in it, and essentially, the takeaway is, we're not looking about, we're not looking at running out of capacity anytime soon. So, to the extent that you're thinking about the plan and how much growth is appropriate for the community in the future, if someone was saying, hm, before we set a number, we should know whether or not, we might be setting the number too high because it's constrained by wastewater treatment capacity, basically, it's not constrained by wastewater capacity. I mean, just in the main, it's not, it's not constrained.
Who's doing this report now, on the wastewater?
Who's doing what?
Who's doing the analysis?
The company that was, I'm trying to remember which firm, it was one of the, one of the well-known firms. If I could remember the name, I might actually, yeah, it might have been in the, the footer of whatever document that I shared, so I might be able to answer that question in a couple of seconds. It's not on the tip of my tongue, but it's a, yeah, someone you'll know. Okay, so wastewater treatment capacity, it's, even though we are well into this 20-year block, we've grown more slowly than the study that was the basis for that capacity had assumed we would grow, so we're not maxing out. And so you could set your number that describes what you think is the right amount of growth without much worry that you're doing something wrong vis-à-vis wastewater. Okay, schools.
Kevin, one more question there?
Yeah.
It looks like that evaluation report was based on a annual growth of 14 and 1/2 people per year.
Yeah, it's a tiny, it's a tiny amount, and the, that's why I said very conservative, because they had originally, they had done their first draft using a different set of projections, which were really even conservative, more conservative. But they have done an updated version that is using the same set of numbers as the RPC's projections. So they've updated, they've updated the numbers. Yeah, so those are the tables that I had, because I didn't have the final version of the report. But with that, one of my very first comments when I saw that was that you shouldn't be using that set of numbers, you should be using the RPC's numbers, which they have done.
Okay.
Okay. The school, the current policy, well, first, people want good schools, not surprising, diverse and excellent. But the, the policy language regarding not wanting to over, be over-capacity or stress them also applies to schools, and, you know, we want them to be excellent, the town will carefully monitor the needs of its population and, and add or modify facilities as required. Like I said in the second bullet, schools are along with other facilities in that goal to provide services that are consistent with our rate of growth. The plan talks about working with the school board to plan for the continued provision of high-quality education, consistent with the plan rates of growth. It's something that doesn't get a lot of attention, but on an annual basis, we share information with the supervisory union, they take the information on the number of building permits that have been issued, and that factors into things like their school enrollment projections. So, so we're passing information back and forth. So, I, I have focused for now on the Shelburne Community School. It's the in-town facility. Many years ago, and it's included in the plan still, there was a term rated capacity that was used to describe the school at 750 students. When I put together this slide presentation, I was waiting to hear back from the supervisory union or the school board about this, and I've got an email that I'm going to show up. But the, there have been some changes, the space is used more efficiently, or this available space is organized more efficiently, so essentially, the capacity of the school is higher than that 750. You can see, I included some slides that show the school age population projections historically and into the next decade or so. School age population projections are, I don't want to say notorious, but the first five years are great because the kids who are attending school have been born, and you can start taking the kids, you can take last year's births to residents of the town, and you can age them, and you know when they're going to hit first grade or kindergarten, and you can collect statistics that'll tell you, you know, what you're likely to have in terms of the number of kids. What's the relationship between the birth and a year, and how many kids hit kindergarten, and you can migrate them from each year to year. So usually, the first five years of a school age enrollment projection are pretty good, then after that, you're having to then predict births and then migrate those, and it gets a little bit dicier. But you can look at this, and you can see that the amount of change in the school enrollment, it's not, it's not drastic. It's, overall, the projection is for an increase, but it's a pretty, pretty modest increase. But, you know, if you look at the next five years, it's, ah...
Do we know how many children are in private schools?
Um, we can estimate it, I don't have it off the top of my head, but Shelburne is a community where, yes, there are everything from kids who live in Shelburne who go to RICE to kids going to private school away, who we, you know, we have very little awareness of, in a sense.
Plus the schools we have here.
Well, we're talking about K through 8.
Just, yeah, just, just as an example for high school, and, and, yes, it would also include kids who are going to Waldorf for K through 8 enrollment as well. I don't, I don't have those numbers on me.
I bet it's like 20.
But they would be estimated, since there's, yeah, we would be adding up a series of numbers. It's not like there's anyone whose job it is, other than ours, to count up all those kids from Shelburne who go to private schools. So, whoops, what I wanted to show, I think, at this point, yeah, was the... Yeah, so, Dave Connery of the school board, currently, the enrollment's around 750 plus 20 kids in their early ed program. So he's, he's looked at this a couple of different ways, but he's, there, essentially, he's come up with this idea of sections having a certain capacity, and then you multiply by the number of sections, but using his comment here, using the footprint to the max, you could fit about 850 to 870, although it would be tight. But my, my main comment is that the old plan had said 750, we're talking about something higher than that, maybe 100 or so higher than that, and that number is still greater than what the projections show. So, similarly, you know, so you, because, yeah, the, the forecasts don't get above 800 for the 10 years. So, you know, the, again, the general takeaway is that, using the information that we have, schools would not be a limiting factor for growth, given current trends or expected This was where things were going to get turned over to Perry, and there could be discussion of the edits made to the growth and development section. The main number that might be discussed further was, everybody's still happy with 50, and that would stay there. This is a reformatted version of the table that you had seen. You based the 50 on a couple of the time periods, yeah, kind of looking at the 15 to 20 and 20 to 25, taking the 58, 46, and you came up with 50.
So 50 with, what is the average household, it's like 2.2 or something, 2.25?
About that, yes.
So you're looking at about 25 hous, 24 houses a year, 20 to 24 house?
And, and that's about the number, yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of like a, a default number, a little bit on the high end.
But can you just repeat that? So you're saying average household size in Shelburne is about 2.2?
2.2, 2.25, yeah, something.
Small.
It's been a little while since I've looked at the numbers, but that's the neighborhood of it. Yeah, they've been going down historically, but... So, I, I don't know if there's much desire on the part of the commission to talk about that number anymore, or the reasons for it, or anything like that, and if, if not...
I think I'm the only one that thought it should be a little bit higher, but I'm not going to argue that point, it's...
Yeah, and I, I would just say, speaking for myself, these, any number, any one of these points, you could go off on a tangent and argue it in any number of ways. So the way, when I'm thinking through this, the way I try to approach it is, is, as long as we recognize there's growth and we do want to encourage a certain level of growth, and the town infrastructure can only handle, in its current state, can only handle a certain capacity, which we are currently under for, say, education, sewer, all of that water. So if, as far as the town plan goes, as long as we have a, a, a list of key triggers, be it school capacity, water capacity, sewer capacity, then anytime there are developments that are proposed, or maybe it's an annual assess, hey, what's our growth rate, what is the population now, how does it relate to these triggers, and have an area for each trigger, that if you're getting into a, a red zone, or you're, you're getting close to your capacity, then that would trigger a discussion to say, hey, we need to expand sewer before we can approve this project, or whatever it may be.
And by trigger, are you thinking of something like what the state uses for wastewater, where they say, hey, and if, if you hit 80% of your capacity, you have to start, something, something needs to, different has to happen, or are you talking about something else?
Right, and maybe, and in an extreme case, it could be a moratorium, in a more overlapping case, it could be, okay, there's this project that's being proposed to be implemented within to be implemented within the next two years, and that's going to blow the capacity for the sewer system. So if, either there would be a negotiation with the developer to help support expansion of that, or does the town have plans to expand it, and does that timeline fit? And if it does, and you, you go through that analysis, then all of these things can live harmoniously. If not, then decisions need to be made about either not approving the development, or going after expanding the sewer in that.
But again, I guess I'm just looking to be sure that I'm understanding that what the commission might want is more specific identification of schools and, say, wastewater as the key, the key components of infrastructure. Or do you want to go beyond that, and maybe for those, or for all of them, set a percentage of capacity? You could choose something else, but percentage of capacity is, is, is one. Or you could, you know, if that's percentage of capacity, you could, you could do something that's an absolute number. I, I'm just trying to get a handle on, how far do you want to go?
I have a thought on this. So, okay, I think all of this should be tied to development patterns, and we need to get some feedback on what people want, how they want to see the town grow. Do that, do we, if, if it's going to be low-density subdivisions everywhere, I can imagine people, you know, saying bar the gates when there are 50 people in, like, we, that's enough, because it's going to have a very dramatic impact on the way this community looks. That being said, if the Form-Based Code on Route 7 sort of takes off, and we get some interest, I mean, you see what's happening in South Burlington, you know, and we, some of that starts to come south, and some of those sort of languishing properties start to get redeveloped with a fair amount of density, that's all located on existing properties that have already been previously developed. We could see potentially a fair amount of density going in there, and it's not going to have one bit of impact on the appearance and the pastoral aspect of the rural areas. That won't be diminished one bit, you know, by, by that kind of a development. So I think, really, it, it's, it's just too abstract to talk about it as, you know, and, and we could get maybe 100 people coming in in one of those easily, you know, if it's an apartment building or something like that, or some kind of a complex that gets put in in, you know, one of the old motor hotels or something. So, I, I mean, I, I think we, we should really tie it to development patterns, and to really hard numbers, like, how much wastewater capacity do we have, and, and how much school capacity? Because otherwise, it's just, you know...
We're, we're talking about the capacity being...
Well, to me, that makes, that makes a lot of sense, to, to, to use those as your, your defining attributes, by which you judge how much is too much, you know?
I'm just a little worried that we're conflating two issues, or we're, I, I don't, I, I hear what you're saying, but I'm not, I, I guess I'm, to me, it sounds like we're in violent agreement, but, but you're, but you're adding in the, the development patterns, which to me, the patterns can be controlled through our regulations and how we're promoting or discouraging growth based on our regulations. So like, in the, in the case of the Royal District, we've got the five-acre zoning, and we're investigating hamlets, and how do we retain open swaths of land instead of having a, a dot in the middle of each five-acre plot? That, that to me is separate from the rate of growth. I mean, the, the rate of growth is going to happen regardless of how, based, I mean, even the, the first slide that you had in the, in the presentation, that talked about you can have distributed or very dense, but the...
So, but which do we want? That's the question.
I think what Kate is leaning towards, if I could, is we don't want to have a housing project, for instance, like the golf course going on, and then having some developer coming in and being told that they have to wait because we've already hit our average for the next two or three years to go into the growth, the Route 7 corridor. We want that growth to occur.
Oh, so the point being that if we're saying an average growth of 50 per year, and we have 200 people next year that come in, I mean...
Right.
And they want to build in, on Route 7 corridor, we want that growth to occur.
We absolutely do, but that's still, it's, it's a matter of, I think we were talking about this last time as well, it's, it, that, it, it's not that we're saying an average of 50 per year, and if we're over that, we're going to freak out and run around. Like, the, the, that number, it's more of a guideline, and, and I think where, at least I've been rationalizing it mentally, is, it doesn't matter really what the growth is, as long as you're maintaining perspective of it, and you're living within your infrastructure means, and when you start hitting a limit on what your infrastructure can handle, that's when you need to figure out, okay, we either need to put a moratorium on growth, or find some solution, but you just can't gross past a certain point.
Right, and that amount is probably way more than 50 people, I mean, in terms of what we could do. So, you know, abstractly speaking, you know, theoretically, we could grow by, I don't know, what, 150, 200 people a year, without even, you know, having an appreciable difference in our capacity?
You mean, if someone was doing infill along the Route 7 corridor, and, yeah, we would...
And we could easily accommodate that.
But then there may be traffic considerations and that sort of thing, but there would still be considerations, I mean, if you start adding 200 people a year in the Route 7 corridor, that's going to impact your sewer infrastructure.
It's not, not negatively, because we have plenty of capacity. So if someone wanted to come in and put in a 50-unit apartment building, they can't build that incrementally.
Right.
Right, so it is the style that dictates, it's not the number, because...
What we care about is where the development ends up happening, and the pattern that it ends up happening in. That's what I'm hearing.
So can I, can I make another run at arguing that these are interrelated, both important, but not necessarily absolutely codependent or mutually dependent? That, I, I made a copy of this, some of the output from the scenario model to eliminate the fact that, you know, under these different scenarios, the amount of land that was developed is radically different. So the way that we're doing things now, we're talking about 1,400 acres of land that's developed, converted. It's not, you know, there's seven acres of redevelopment in the trend scenario, but 1,424, that's new development, that previously undeveloped land. But into the core scenario, there's much more redevelopment and a smaller amount of development. And to me, what I, what I'm interpreting, or how I'm interpreting the concern that Kate is expressing, is that she, or one way to tackle the concern is, think about having a developed land budget, because the way that people want the community to grow is not to see, is to, to avoid having open land developed. So we can talk about density, we can talk about absolute numbers of acres, there are different statistics that we could apply to come to the same place, but I think the basic idea is that Kate's saying, or people are saying, we don't want to see open land developed. And that's, that's great, that's a valid goal, and maybe you want to have a number in the plan that talks about that.
Perhaps what we could do is to have the number and exclude the Route 7 corridor.
Well, why don't we just say where we want the development to go?
How, so how would we measure that, though? So when, if we say it, how would we know, two years after adopting it, how well we're doing? That's the question that I'm, I'm, I would be looking for the plan to give us something that makes it easier for people to agree that we're on track or that we're not, so would it...
Wouldn't you just need benchmark numbers by, like, Growth Area 1, Growth Area 2, Rural?
Well, you could, I mean, that's, I mean... How, how would it be best done to know how well we're doing? Is it, is it like the regional plan, where they talk about the percentage within the growth areas, or the planning areas, I think they call them? I mean, that's, that's one way of doing it.
Well, I mean, there's a, how we have, I mean, the next page has this map that shows, like, where our little dots are. I mean, you just kind of add it up, right?
Um, well, that was one, that was one of the reasons for, for making this map, yeah, I mean, we've, we've done maps like these in the, in the office for many, many years, and, and this is the handy output from the map that Pam did online, to show where are all that, where are all the developed units? And then, do, look at them by time periods. So, yeah, we know where, we, we know where homes and, and commercial properties, businesses are located. But what we're, what we're really interested, well, we could be interested in two things. We could be looking at, how are we going to do between now and, say, five years from now? Or we could be really extreme, and we'd be saying things like, we need to, we need to move some of those existing houses that are out in the outline areas, we need to effectively move them to the core. I don't think you're ready to go there yet, but maybe. So instead, you'd be looking at, well, what should the pattern of the next five years be? Should it be more like the pre-World War II period, or should it be more like the 50s, since the 50s and the post-war period?
Well, all, all of our discussions around land, land use and where we want to focus growth, I think that we would want to see growth concentrate into the growth areas. So that, that bottom right one is not...
The middle, the, the, the top two is what we, the town plan says that we'd like, and we are figuring out how to say that ever more strongly, and I think eloquently and succinctly. But our zoning regulations actually get us the, the thing down in the lower area there. I mean, that's, that's like our huge problem. I mean, you know, we'd love to have all this development, for example, go into Route 7. Have we supported that? I would say we have not, because we have not even adopted as de facto zoning the Form-Based Code. So, you know, we were told point-blank by developers, like, I would never use this. Why would I use this? There's no incentive for me to use it. So I think, you know, we have to get, we've got to put our money where our mouths, our mouth is, if we really want to be serious about not basically having this lovely town plan that talks about all of these great things, but actually achieves, you know, the thing with all the purple and red cranberries.
Well, and, and I won't say that, that these processes move quickly by any stretch of the imagination, but that's been my impression in my time on the commission, that we are working towards consolidating these things, and the, the exercises that we're going through now in terms of rewriting the town plan, we're putting in goals, objectives, and recommended actions. And instead of working on the plan, we could focus on working on the regulations, but we have to get the plan out of the way first, which I think is just a challenge. If we, if we weren't working on the plan right now, those are some of the priorities that I think we've been leaning towards.
So if we go back to where we started from, Dean asked us if we were comfortable with the number 50, and I would like to say now that I am. Because I think what we're talking about, what we're trying to figure out, we're not going to figure out at this point in the game, and maybe when we're faced with more development, we can react and make our change according to the circumstance. So let's move forward so we can get this plan, and we can come back to this discussion.
Yeah, I think as far as the town plan is concerned, that, that's why I just want to make sure that we've got these things well discussed, we're, we're on a similar page. Like, it, it could, it could definitely be a rabbit hole in terms of having each growth area, or each, each area with its own benchmarks and triggers and that sort of thing, because clearly, development in the rural area is not going to impact the sewer capacity. So those, those are considerations, and development of retirement communities and that sort of thing isn't likely to impact the school capacity. So there's a lot of different variables that could be put into this equation, but I, I, I'm still a firm believer, and I'm, I'm with you, Kate, that we, we don't want to turn the rural area into just dotted with houses. And that, that's where initiatives like hamlets and talking through how we can do that, and the transect concept and that sort of thing, that are being added as recommended actions, because we don't have the time to focus on those issues right now, unless the suggestion is to throw in a section in one of these commission meetings to spend 30 minutes talking about how we could update a regulation, because there's a burning platform. I, I'm just not sure how we fit it all in.
Well, I, I still don't understand, really, almost why, the 50 persons a year just, it, it seems meaningless to me. It doesn't, it doesn't mean anything unless you think about where the development is going.
The only thing it means is that if we get two or three large developments going, that gives the DRB the opportunity to phase, it gives, it gives them a platform to determine how they're going to phase. That's all that number really, I think, means. So if it's 50, or 60, or 70, and maybe it shouldn't even be people, maybe it should be number of units, building units. Maybe it should be 30 structures or a year average, or something. There's, I don't, I don't see that...
I mean, there are towns that I'm aware of that have used numbers of building permits as their measure of growth. They, you know, Lincoln did it for a while, Fairfax or Fairfield did it for a while. I mean, if, that's, that's a, you're not limited to one. Shelburne has just tended to use one, one number, that is people, population, and you've used it for a number of years, and as I have said, I think, a couple of times, you don't have to use it, but you're supposed to talk about growth or address growth policies in the plan, but you don't have to do it with that number.
I, I think I'm, I'm just still stuck on the, and I, I see how it could get divided and broken down into further and further detail, but I'm, to me, that, that number of 50, it is somewhat arbitrary. I mean, it's, hey, based on the projections from the Regional Planning Commission and whatever data we have available, this seems like reasonable growth, but there are still parameters in which that growth would need to take place, or not. I mean, and that, and that's where, to me, anyway, the importance of the triggers and having an understanding of what your baseline data is, and how fast you're growing, and do you, does your capacity sustain that growth? And if it doesn't, where do you start scaling back and give the DRB the power to say, hey, let's phase in these projects, because we need to upgrade our infrastructure, or school capacity, or whatever, and we're not going to be able to do that in the time that you want this project done?
Hmm, yeah, the whole idea is to allow growth to be incremental enough so that we can react as a town.
Right, but I think, I really do think that that's separate with how we grow. I mean, there's clearly the density issue and that sort of thing, and I think all of our conversations and where we, where we all see the regulations going is to really focus growth. And to your point, if making Form-Based zoning the de facto zoning in that Route 7 corridor, then, okay, how, how do we get to that place? I mean, I, I was thinking that Form-Based zoning was sort of being phased in, and that's why it's optional at this point, but that the end goal would be to make it permanent.
We were kind of discouraged from, from phasing into it, and perhaps we should go back and look at that again, and start moving Form-Based zoning ahead.
I think it's, I think it's confusing to have, you know, to, to have it, I mean, this is maybe a discussion for another time, but I think it's confusing. There are just not the incentives that are there, and, I mean, if, if we're, you know, if we're, we really, if we really want to see that area redeveloped in that way, I think we have to, you know, get serious about, about pursuing that as the, the only kind of zoning option there is.
No, no disagreement, and, and from that perspect, I, I don't know if this was the intent, but when, when I learned that Form-Based zoning being adopted, zoning being adopted was, it's a, it's optional, and if we give that a period of time, whatever that is, and we realize, okay, well, no developer is actually using Form-Based zoning, because it doesn't work for them, then, then we need to assess, why aren't they using it? And let's change that. And an extreme measure can be, we just make that de facto, and that is the only option, and then if no, no development happens, we'd have to change it anyway. But there's, there's got to be some level of iteration. I don't know how to make it happen faster.
I mean, and if, if the commission is thinking that it would consider making Form-Based zoning, if you would like to make that as a, an important policy, I would suggest that your future land use map could bring in the character districts, and make that an element of the future land use section. Again, I'm not talking about trying to push you to modify the future land use map just because it can have all kinds of implications, but at the very least, make it clear that along that corridor, that's the land use pattern that you're promoting. Because right now, it's all one blob.
Well, and part of this is, Form-Based zoning has been in the background, where we just had the, the consulting work just wrapped up on the, the latest revision... Yeah, well, and part of this is form-based zoning has been in the background where we just had the, the consulting work just wrapped up on the, the latest revision and that, that still needs to be adopted.
We haven't really even reviewed it.
Right. I mean, that, that's where it, it comes into a time thing. I mean, how, how, what do we want to prioritize? And like our current priority is the town plan because of the very limited timeline, even though it seems like we have a lot of time. I, I'd be happy to work in additional discussions to say, hey, let's, let's address the form-based zoning comments. And if there are any key parts that we really need to debate so that we can move that forward and get it formalized, then let's do it. But I wouldn't want that to overtake, for some reason I can't use the word Trump anymore, but I, I don't want that to take the place of the work that we need to do.
Right. No, and nor, nor do I. But, you know, Dean makes a good point that we, we have the existing regulatory map. It's visually based. It's, you know, it's, it, we're hoping to do more of the same. I mean, one of the points, one of the reasons for pursuing form-based zoning, the way we did it, was we, 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 there was some virtue, we thought, in the idea of creating a kind of template that could be exported to be used in different parts of the, the town. It would be sort of like a way of approaching zoning and administering it and achieving, you know, a more proactive type of, um, settlement on the land. And, and so, you know, um, but I think as an optional code, it's just sort of languishing. It's not being used. It's, you know, it, um, we're, we're not leveraging the value in it, you know, and there was, you know, uh, six years of pretty hard work that went into, um, into preparing that. So is it perfect? No. But, you know, I mean, you know, maybe as Jamie used to say, you know, don't let the, the perfect be the enemy of the good.
Right. Well, I mean, is that something that that wouldn't even be a recommended action? That could be an objective, like adopt form-based zoning as de facto zoning.
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, that make, that, this is our opportunity to define the priorities. And then there will certainly be discussion and people can provide their input after we get our draft together.
Okay.
So in terms of the things that I was going to try to get through, um, wrapping up the last part of the slides that I had, there was this question, how do we want to grow and what's the best way to show it? And what's the best way to get people's input on it? And this is where the idea of the visual preference survey, which is, it's, believe it or not, it's a trademark term. The professor at Princeton who came up with it, I guess, was really.
You have to pay him a buck every time you say it.
So, so I'm, I'm going to stop using it. So this survey, uh, does raise the issue of what's, what is the best way to get people's inputs on patterns? And I pulled this slide together using some of the images that you've already seen before that Kate has found that do it in different ways. There are different ways that, um, we can represent these concepts. And I think that it would be very, very helpful if there's a consensus on the part of the commission about what you feel is the best way to present it. And we will use that way to get people's input. Or a couple. I just don't want to, I don't want to make the mistake of choosing the way that people later say, oh, that was the dumb way to do it. So if there are, if you want to keep plugging away at this idea of doing a survey and we're trying to gauge people's opinions about growth, what are your feelings? Is it axiometric, um, drawings? Um, is it this section approach? Is it something that's map-based? Is it something that focuses a lot on the grid, the street system? Is it something three-dimensional? I'm, I'm not particularly a fan of the lower left, but it does convey for some people density. I just, I, um, in addition to some of these things that you'd seen before, there are some open source sources of images, um, of building footprints. These are all Shelburne. To me, they actually, they kind of work, um, to get a sense of what people might like, but I'm a map person. So it works for me, but it may not work for others. And there's a three D version of that. So there are different things that are available. And so I'm interested in hearing a discussion about what's the recommended way to do it. Then beyond that, I wanted to, um, include in the packet some other materials that Kate had found that relates to, I forget where in Michigan it was, I forget now.
It was a grand, grand rap, grand rapids, um.
Yeah. Where there's a publication that was included that, um, was really part of a much larger effort to get, to tease out a few different things, including people's understanding of what, what kind of neighborhood do they live in, what kind of place did they think they lived in? But I'm, I'm not, I'm not leaving out the possibility that a survey could use photos. I think that could be very, very helpful. I also like the idea of giving people some measures like lot width and setbacks and talking about those things because they are very, very important. I, the document that Kate had provided, um, there's stuff about architectural patterns, and I thought that was a level of detail that we didn't need to get to. So, um, I would be thinking about development patterns, the way the buildings are arranged across the land and, and avoid talking about architecture. But if people feel strongly about architecture as a critical component of land development patterns, okay, that's the direction. We'll take it in.
I, can I?
Yeah.
Provide some input? Okay. Um, so of the, if you can go back to a couple, there you go. I would say that.
Do you want a pointer or?
No, it's okay. The, I would say that the drawing in the upper left, the urban, suburban, rural, agricultural, natural, that transect presented that way, I think would have some resonance for people in terms of what, what we're talking about. Be something accessible. And what we're, I think what we're, we're, we're imagining is some, putting together a sort of a survey that people could, um, access on, you know, Front Porch Forum and other venues. And really just give us their feedback about, you know, how they think the town ought to grow. Because, um, we are going to have some growth at least coming our way and we need, we need to figure out where it's going to go and, and, um, and if people, the priority is to retain as much of our rural open lands as possible, then that means that, um, we have to use the remaining land resources that we have more efficiently than we currently are. And so, well, what, what does that mean? So that's what we're trying to, you know, we would be trying to, to get feedback from people. And at the same time, um, increasingly, that also means, um, making sure that the development is resilient, resilient to stormwater. So, um, so we have to, um, achieve many different objectives. So, and then I think, you know, the, on the upper right-hand side, um, this community talked about to show how growth was happening, they used color coding to show like where the growth happened over time. And then they also keyed it with what the development pattern looked like. So the, the yellow on the left-hand side is the, um, the oldest part. And that is, uh, in the, their urban core. And, and, um, so that's where it is. And that, the grid system below is how it manifests. And then, um, the first outer ring suburbs are next to it in the, um, the blue and, and that's the, you know, still connected, walkable pattern of development, and then so on and so forth. So, and as you see, as it gets farther out, it, you know, it's a more auto-centric, um, you know, suburban, auto-dependent kinds of, um, development that, um, you know, is, is sprawl. So, you know, if, if that's what you incentivize, then you know, that, that's just going to turn into, I think, a lot of the the kinds of things that people say they don't want to have happen here. So, so what do we do? And then Dean, if, um, and then just the one on the lower left, I, I agree, that's, I mean, that's Manhattan. But it's just, it's interesting because it shows in the upper image how incredibly dense the population in Manhattan was. I think, what is that, like around nineteen hundred or so? Early, early twentieth century compared to what it is today. So, um, the point being that you can really, um, the, the carrying capacity of the land can be, um, exploited in different ways. So, uh, it, I, I don't know if you can call up the Ithaca pattern.
The document that you emailed?
Yeah, that, um, I had forgotten about that until I was looking through that today and then realized I forgot to send it to you.
Let's see. Um, I, I have it. I just need to remember where I.
I just emailed it to you, so it's possible that I am putting you on the spot a little bit.
No, that's, okay.
So while, while Dean's looking that up, I think, maybe I'm just not rubbing my head around this properly. Because when I think of, we have our growth areas and the growth areas are served by sewer. And then we have rural areas.
Yep.
So, I mean, the, like, the transect approach completely, I, I understand and appreciate it. But you're, are you suggesting?
What I'm suggesting is that the zoning that we have is not prescriptive enough. It doesn't, it just says, this is, all it says is this is the density that's allowed on this piece of land. And it doesn't give any other information about what kind of development we would like. So in the absence of that and the fact that, you know, we live in the era that we do, the default is auto-centric sprawl development. That's just the default that we get. That's what builders build.
Okay. But that, that can't really happen, well, I mean, it can happen in the rural area, but the rural area.
This is what we get. This is the, you see cul-de-sacs and just nothing's connected and, you know, there's, there's no, and, and it's all segregated, you know, it's all, um, there's, it's not, it's not really a true mix of uses. It's not like, um, the kind of development that we have in the older parts of the village. You know, where there's a mix of houses and, um, there might be, um, um, an office or, or, there's flexibility about how buildings are used over time, you know, like we have in the historic village. So it's possible to build like that again, but we have to, um.
I think you have to show it. So I mean, I think human nature is such that if we want to put this out to the general public and hope that a few interested folks fill in the survey. If you look at these images, um, you know, the, the urban looks like nothing you would want to live near.
Right.
Um, and the natural looks lovely, but I think, and then you look at these layouts and you think, well, oh, I know this. Like this is my street. So sure. I think people inherently sort of go to what they know. I wonder if there's almost ways of giving examples, maybe even photographic examples of interesting development, either that exists in Shelburne or a surrounding area, saying, okay, we're talking about, I'm not, I'm really bad at identifying the names of things. So the Champlain Housing Trust development across from TD Bank and, you know, where Sean Sweeney has hit Harrington Village, right? So that's an example to show to folks or to the Heinsberg sort of village, tiny little village on a green right downtown. And showing that sort of modern country style home that has been developing as a trend in this Chittenden County area. So that they understand what are you talking about? You know, are you talking about an apartment over the jewelry, over the, you know, jewelry studio? Or are you talking about my home in Boulder Hill? Like, I think people actually need to really understand.
So photos, photos is.
Right.
By actual photos of actual development.
So this, so this, this plan from Ithaca, which is a, a, a community, you know, larger, larger than us, but you know, similar, I think a reasonable comparison with us, get, starts, starts to get into, to these kinds of options and.
Yeah, I don't know this document. So is there a particular section or a page?
Just, just kind of look through it. It, it gives some, um, examples of, okay, here you go. Here's a couple of different ways of how to, um, you know, organize, uh, development types, right? Um, so if you kind of continue, um, scroll ups, cluster develop, okay. I'm sorry, Dean, if you can go back.
This one or do you want to keep going?
Yeah, I mean, so that's, that's showing infill. They're just, they're different, they're.
Isn't this what form-based zoning addresses?
It is, yeah. This is if, this is just something that, um, we could use to think about how a form-based approach could apply in other parts of the town, not just in the Route Seven corridor. So they used it for their entire, um, their entire community, not just, you know, where we have in the Route Seven corridor.
I, I'm not averse to the discussion. I just, I, I feel like this is significantly broadening the scope of what we're trying to achieve.
Right, right. So we're not talking about designing, proposing specific regulations. This is, this proposal for, uh, Ithaca, which shows how form-based zoning could apply to the entire town. This was selected by the citizens of Ithaca because they previously studied, they were in the same situation that we were, asking the question of how are we going to grow? And this was the option that they chose coming out of, um, careful study of this and considering, um, just as we are, the implications of different, um, of, of, of doing nothing, using conventional zoning and basically doing nothing. Or of trying to come up with ways to shape, shape the growth in certain ways. And they decided that they wanted to shape the growth. And then this is what it led to was the form-based zoning. So Dean, if you would go to the beginning of the document, I think they get more into, you know, they show some of the reasons for for pursuing this in the first place.
That's a small document.
Yeah. Okay. Well, so anyway, if, if you guys want to sort of, you know, look at, at that, at your, you know, at some point when you, when you would like to. It's just, it's just a way to, um, I think that people are engaged by, you know, a visual approach. And you make it easy for them to, you know, do you like this or do you like this? You know, just make it simple.
And, and I think the struggle that I'm having here is that, okay, so let's say we put together this survey and we ask what people want to see. And we send it out to the thousands of people in town and we get, let's, let's be really liberal and say we get seventy responses of people saying, yeah, this is what I like. But I, I don't, I'm not seeing how we can really leverage that into anything. Because it's more about, I think we're on a good path around how do we, um, protect the rural district in terms of investigating clusters and hamlets and all of that good stuff. How, how can we protect those open spaces so we don't end up with a house on every five acre plot? I think that's, that's where we've got broad agreement.
But we do have to, we think, we do, maybe this is the better thing to go back to. We do have to decide ultimately, what is that going to look like in the aggregate, right?
And maybe that's, this is, this may be the point that I'm missing. We, we're, we're focusing growth into the growth areas and we're not focusing growth in the rural areas, but we're looking to contain how the growth happens in the rural areas. So to me, it's not so much a transect. It is, you're, I mean, you could build in the growth area up to whatever that growth area is that's within the sewer area. And if that's the case, we are looking at a particular neighborhood and saying, hey, we have this space. We want to do a survey that we could then promote to a group of developers to say, hey, here's what the town is looking for. Does this jog anything? And spark any desire to want to build something? Because if not, it, I, I just, I don't know what having a handful of opinions on what people like is going to, like how that's going to either encourage development or solve anything because we've already got the growth area defined.
If I can just interject maybe to stir the pot a little bit or reframe things. A comment I want to make is the importance that I attach to the question relating to a specific place. Like I was saying about, you know, liking particular types of maps or graphics, I think a particular way, maybe I'm selling people short. I, I certainly believe they can express a preference between photos. That's what's the, the, the power of this specific approach is in. That's what's the, the power of this specific approach is in that you, it's like you're getting your eyes checked. Do you like it better this way? Do you like it better this way? You get an answer, you can get a really clear indication of people's preferences about the type of building. But what you don't get unless you tie it to a location is any understanding of the where. And I think this is, well, I'm trying to respond to your comment, Jason, that to do something meaningful with it, I believe we have to relate it to places in Shelburne. So I think you need to ask people a question about their preference, about specific locations. I think it's hard to ask people to express their preferences about the town as a whole unless it's in a really abstract way where they can maybe give you an opinion, but I think maybe sixty percent of people wouldn't, but maybe thirty percent would. I think that people are going to have an easier time if you're giving them discrete choices about a particular place. I think, yeah, trying to keep it, trying to keep it simple. It, it's also very, very hard if you're asking people to ask what they prefer about where they are, because most people like where they are. And so you're going to get, you're going to get a bias in that people won't want where they are to change. But I do think you need to figure out, you need to figure out how you're going to, how people express their preferences about different parts of town. And I don't know if that's to say, choose a rural part of Shelburne and a middle ground part and a core part, and you reinforce your understanding of what people want in each of those places and you call that a win? But it's hard for people without a lot of background information to do more than that, unless you give them a lot of choices. And I've thought about how you could divide the town up into a whole series of areas and you could ask them their preferences for those areas. I think you could get something meaningful, but it makes it a more difficult survey.
Well, in the sample survey that was in the packets, I mean, I, I got the water survey a couple days ago and it'll probably sit there for the next three or four weeks and hopefully I get to it before it's actually due. But like, when I, when I was flipping through this survey, my first thought was, how many responses are we going to get to something like that? And, and even if we get a bunch of responses, how do we use that? What does that achieve? Like, do we package that up and give it to developers? Or are we leveraging that into, hey, let's extend form-based zoning into other districts and this is the basis for it? Like, that's where I'm just not connecting the dots.
Maybe take a step back. What would help all of you as individuals and as a group figure out what should the, what should that alternative pattern map be?
Can we get copies of the last surveys we've done so that we can look at those questions?
Yeah.
And those answers, and maybe that'll help us find what, what we got there and what we missed.
Well, but those are, I mean, that's not graphical at all. I mean.
No, but it's, it shows what happens to a survey and how many responses we got and what we can expect to get out of a new survey. I, I'll repeat again, I think if, we're going to put a whole lot of work into this survey and I don't know that the result is going to be worth the time, I'm not a fan. So, you know, the more detail we're getting into here, the less likely I think that we're going to get a result that's going to be meaningful.
That's why I'm trying to ask questions.
And we did some very simple surveys and maybe just reviewing those.
Can I just?
Before we go.
Can I just jump back for a little bit and, and kind of speak to what I, is my understanding of why we're pursuing this in the first place? We have two sets of information. And one of them is, is survey data that indicates that, you know, the rural, open pastoral beauty of Shelburne is very important to most residents, and they would like to see that maintained. And also that natural resources conservation and preservation is also important to many people in Shelburne. And we have the open space plan that was just approved by the select board several months ago that goes into a lot of detail about the, the location and the quality and the types of resources that we have in various parts of the town. And so those are sort of like our two starting points. And, you know, we are located next to South Burlington and they have a lot of development and it's starting to come south, as we are all aware. And, you know, so there's a conflict there.
But into our growth areas. It's not like they're growing into the rural area.
Well, if, historically though, if you look at the data, there has been a lot of incremental building in the rural area. And the concern is that we are, at some point, we're going to reach a tipping point where we are just going to start to look more like South Burlington than Shelburne, you know?
Isn't that exactly what we're trying to do when we're shaping how growth can happen in the rural area?
Right, right. So, so there, if, if this growth is going to go in the, the growth area, I mean, I'm of the opinion, and this may just be me, but that our zoning is, five-acre zoning in the rural area is not protective enough of the rural area. Doesn't dissuade people from, makes it easy for people to develop there.
I think there's a lot of consensus for that, yeah.
Okay, and then that are, in the growth area, our zoning densities could be actually higher.
Sure.
Than they are. And so if so, I'm proposing development patterns that would look rather different from the ones that the zoning has been achieving up till now. So that would be, I mean, I don't think that it's fair to proceed with this without giving people an idea of like, well, this is what the built implications of that would look like. Are you, you know, is this what people want? Because otherwise, it's just, you know.
Well, so a, a good activity would be, and especially if we could get grant money or something. I mean, you're referencing form-based zoning and you said it took six years. Like, there's, there's a whole long thing.
So, so that, anyway, that was why I was trying to, to look at some of these visual examples of how other towns have accomplished this, who are lucky enough to be the beneficiaries of grants and have lots of resources. So just taking a kind of really cheapo, using open source information, like, you know, just get an idea of like, if we organized, if there was more dense development in the, in the growth areas, but if we organized it like this, what do you think? Would that be acceptable? Would that be okay? Do you like it better? I mean, there's a couple different ways to do it. You can do it like, it can look like this, or it can look, you know, like these other options. And which do you like? You know, to try and, and see if there are scenarios under which people would feel that, that they could tolerate higher density because the amenities that, that could come with it, which might be, you know, a connected path system and open space, common open space around natural features like our riparian areas and continued openness of our rural areas might be worth the cost of maybe living in closer proximity to each other. So, but I think we just need to get that information out there, because otherwise it's all abstract and pictures just seem like the easiest way to start to get some feedback from residents.
I'm not opposed to that.
Because otherwise we'd be putting a lot of time.
I'm not opposed to that either, but I would still like to see the results of our previous surveys, just because we did them. Let's read them. And, you know, the rest of it is, will come together either way.
So, and I don't know, I.
What, you know, there's some basic questions that were asked, I just want to see them personally.
And I apologize for not having done that, but I will forward you, I've done, I've got emails where the summaries of the surveys have been.
Do we have two or was there three?
There were two, two. Mr. Chairman, do you, do you have a, do you have an idea of how much more time you want to spend on this? And, I mean, you don't have.
Well, I think it's, well, for this discussion, in the interest of time, I think that, and maybe we can just have some kind of a discussion, because I, I still want to understand better what the, the goals that I'm hearing are long-term goals that are going to be the result of a lot of discussion and work. And I don't see how that fits into what we're trying to do in terms of getting the town plan sections updated. Like, I'm happy to put in these recommended actions and we can take all this input and, and look at it. But when we were talking about having a land use survey and there seemed to be a big rush of let's get that out there, I don't see what the results of that, how that's going to benefit, what our recommended actions are. I mean, broad-based, we know we want to increase density in the growth areas and we want to be rational about how we do growth in the rural areas. And there are initiatives on both fronts.
Part of the growth area should be, how many lots are in the actual growth area? How many lots are in the falls? How many lots are in the village? How many, you know, let's.
How many developed lots or?
Undeveloped lots or.
Well, there aren't a lot of undeveloped lots.
Well, in the growth area though, in general.
Yeah.
So let's, let's see how many growth area lots.
I also wonder if we're looking for answers from people who don't yet live here. Like, some of the goals are to bring more, to make housing available for people who work in Shelburne to live in Shelburne. And theoretically, you know, some of these apartment-type dwellings might attract young professionals that don't current, you know, without children, who don't currently see Shelburne as a destination because that housing doesn't exist. And so, I mean, I just, I'd be almost curious if.
Well, we can just, one approach is to have all of these things just become recommended actions, of, of a survey of this, of that. You know, we can, we can approach the, earlier there was some interest in trying to say, and we're saying these things because this is grounded in some feedback that we've gotten from residents. It wasn't going to be this super complicated survey, but it was just, you know, voters were asked what they liked and, you know, those that responded, you know, and we would show them something along the lines of, wherever that image was, of the map, Shelburne, you know, this, this or this, you know?
Right.
Something like that. And that we were going to have some sort of, indicate in the town plan that, that this feedback was one of the things that was informing this. But we can just say, we can just say, you know, the intention is to gather that information. This is what we want to have and these are the tools that we will use to try and get more, you know, drill down into how this would actually play out into zoning regulations.
And maybe it can be a little bit of both. If we, if we can get the results of other studies and get our heads around like what the response rate is and the value of that information, then that could help shape what it is that we put into our recommended actions. Or how we might structure a survey to get feedback sooner than later.
Yeah, and the other thing was, I think we had hoped to get a grant to help with some of this, so, you know, and that didn't come through. So, you know, maybe this stuff has to be kind of treated more academically in the town plan.
It's a, it's a little bit of an apple and oranges. With the two surveys that were done, we, we got grants and we got outside help and they had over five hundred responses each time. We were talking about, in the absence of getting a grant, doing something kind of like what Heinsburg had done and these were more like mini surveys or there might be a series of them. So we're, we weren't aiming as high, or I certainly wasn't aiming as high this time because we just didn't have the resources. I will certainly make sure that you have copies of the two previous surveys distributed. The only other thing that I would offer is that some of what I'm hearing suggests to me, maybe what you want to do, or some of you think about doing, is flipping this whole concept. And instead of saying to people, a lot of different questions about what they like and where it would go on the land and the town, think about what you think the right pattern of growth in Shelburne should be and describe the benefits that that pattern will yield. So to say something like, hey, a clustered pattern of growth where we, we have a lower rate of development in the rural areas could have the following benefits. It's going to mean greater density, more affordability, or you know, lower per-unit cost. Building into economies of scale may allow certain things in terms of the architecture. Fewer trips, more access to transit. So build it in the other direction. Think about the pattern that you think makes sense and then create the rationale for it. And maybe what you can then do is use that to explain to people, well, here's a concept we have to, to build more, you know, in a more focused manner. And here are, here are the reasons why. What do you think? It may be easier, more accessible to people to react to that. Oh, okay, yeah, or not.
Yeah, I think the simpler it is, the better responses we would get from it. But then there's obviously the balance of what value you get out of it.
Sir, you've been sitting there all night.
Actually, I should have spoken up earlier. I was here, I was here, do you mind if I talk now?
Yeah.
Yeah, please, sorry.
I'm Frank Talbot and my wife is Michaela Ryan and together we own New Village Farm, just around the corner here. Dean, thanks for calling me a farmer, but my wife's the farmer and I do the books. And the reason I'm here is because, I don't know if you folks are familiar with New Village Farm, but Michaela has created that farm from scratch over twelve years. And what keeps that farm going really is the value-added products, the farm camps, agritourism. If it weren't for that, you know, she wouldn't have made it past the second year. And the current zoning regulations, it's questionable whether they really allow what she's doing there. Dean even brought that up to me a number of years ago.
Well, more recently, Frank, though, she asked a question and I said, well, it would help if you provided me with some additional information and I never heard back, so.
Yeah, that project shifted, so that's why she didn't. But, but still, you know, she provides summer camps to children. Sometimes the schools come and they do all weekend camping trips there and, you know, learn agricultural practices and animal husbandry and whittling and, you know, go into the woods and learn about the woods and learn about the wetlands. So she does a lot more than what has traditionally been called farming. So I'm here really just to encourage you to look at what agritourism practices really you should incorporate into the expanding definition of farming. I think that, you know, small farms just cannot survive without agritourism these days. I just don't see it. And.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? When you say agritourism, you've mentioned camps and, and that was the topic of conversation in the emails I exchanged with her. When you say agritourism, can you be a little bit more specific? Are you talking about?
Farm tours, farm schools.
So an education program, a school?
Educational program.
So that's tied to tourism? I just wanted to know.
Sure, because people, you know, she's had.
Come learn to melt goats school, not, not a, a academic school for.
Correct.
Okay.
Or people traveling through who want to just camp out and have a farming experience, because they are tourists. You know, there are farms that provide that.
Just a question out of the blue, is it RMB? Are you doing more than fifty percent?
So Dick, I can maybe interject there. I mean, this is, this is an area that when you scratch a little, a lot will come out. And there's a lot going on in this area. The thing I need to be really clear about is, is the importance of recognizing where the lines are right now. These activities are explicitly not recognized as agriculture by the department, the agency of agriculture. So they don't benefit from the exemption that things that comply with the AAPs or the RAPs do. So really, this is fundamentally a question about a, an allowed, allowed use. So just with that in mind, I would strongly discourage you from blurring the line between farming and other things. Call it something else, allow it, what have you. But no one is served by expanding the definition of farming or blurring the definition so that things are just going to be a bigger headache too. Now, one of the things that has to be pointed out regarding their property is that it's in the conservation district. And that, that makes it more difficult for, for them. And so perhaps that's a change that the commission would want to consider is to put it in rural. Although, having said that, I have to remind people, well, why is it in the conservation district rather than in the rural district? And that's because the general principle of the future land use map is that lands that have Vermont Land Trust conservation easements fall into that category. It's not a hard, hard, hard rule, but that's why. So the town invested, I think, thirty thousand, forty thousand dollars in the conservation of that property, which at the time when we made that contribution, I've talked with people like Gail Albert, who, who thought that meant that it was going to be, you know, just kept open. And I think that provides some of the rationale that some people cited for having it in conservation. But think about not only the use. But think about not only the use, think about the designation, because conservation district may not be the right district, although perhaps it is, too.
And that was, and, thank you, Dean, and that brought up another point that I did want to make, is that the land is in conservation, and I presume it's in conservation because the development rights were sold to the Vermont Land Trust, so it is conserved property. But there are conservation easements that, you know, went along with the price that was paid for, for that conveyance. And those easements allow everything that she's doing right now. That allows, it allows farming, it allows education, it allows recreation. So it allows her uses, but the way the town has defined conservation land, they have further restricted it. So, and, and in, in the, some of the recommended actions, I noticed that, that you folks were considering requiring management plans on how she's going to, you know, manage this conserved property. My suggestion is that if land is already being governed by Vermont Land Trust, you already have sufficient oversight. You know, Vermont Land Trust comes twice a year and walks the property, and makes sure that what we're doing is in compliance with the easements.
And just, I mean, I'm not intending to make any kind of challenge to what Frank is saying, but I'll cite a recent example that was discussed at the last Natural Resources Committee meeting. Gail Albert came to a meeting of the select board to ask about the fact that snow is coming from Burlington, that's snow taken off parking lots and streets, and also from other communities evidently, and it's being transported to the Mack Farm, which is a Vermont Land Trust conserved property just south of Teddy Bear. And it's being dumped yards from the McCabe's Brook, which is a brook where the water sampling has shown has really elevated levels of salt in the water. I could give you a copy of a letter from the Vermont Land Trust stewardship coordinator that says that under their easement, that's okay. It's, it's arguable whether or not the fact that a property is governed by Vermont Land Trust is necessarily going to serve all of the interests of the town. I appreciate the point that you're making, but it's one that people can have different legitimate views about, including people in the Natural Resources Committee, because their recommendation was, is that the Vermont Land Trust should reexamine that issue.
That's a point well taken. So, thank you. Don't want to take up any more time, but I think that, you know, expanding the definition of farming to include, you know, elements of agritourism that are really, I think, essential for this community is an important part of this process.
Yeah, thanks for raising the issue.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. So that's something we could probably work into a conversation down the line to-
Yeah.
If you think about it as a zone issue or a planning issue, I mean, how do you-
The snow thing is, yeah, that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
That, that's definitely not good.
Yeah, that has some people alarmed.
Yeah, well, and then, you know-
I might be in that camp.
And we have to pay for the mitigation, right?
Well, that's, yeah, that's, that's the bigger thing.
So, their impact, we, we get to pay. Okay, all right, so, so maybe, just to circle back to the future land use, if, if that's okay, just to kind of tie this up. So maybe we're, what, it sounds like we're, we're in agreement that we're going to dial back what we're trying to do. We're going to talk about this approach as one that we're in agreement, has a lot of merit, and should be pursued, and, and then come up with various recommendations and objectives for moving, advancing it.
Yep. And leverage the work that's been done and keep the momentum going.
Into the regulation, and, and one of them could be to try and get some, some, a grant or some assistance with the visualization of options, so that, because I really think that for people to buy into any kind of a big shift, you've got to provide a lot of information about what the benefits are, and these are very, these are abstractions for most people, and, and for many of the property owners. And I think that to get, you know, buy-in and comfort level and all that, we just have to provide a bit more clarity and information, or vision, about where we're going. And, and the good news is there's a lot of great open source examples of it these days out there, because we're, we're a little bit slow coming to this, this party here in Shelburne.
So, the town adopts the town plan by-
The select board.
The select board simply adopts it.
Select board adopts it after holding two public hearings.
There's a public discussion opportunity and-
Yes, they hold two sets of, we hold, so we hold public hearings, and once we've decided that it's in a form that we're ready to send to them, and then they review it, and they hold their public hearings. So there's, there's a lot of-
So might there be an opportunity to use that time to sell it? Basically, I mean, it seems like that this group is in agreement as to what potential growth patterns might be most beneficial, and then to be able to put together a pictorial representation of that and say, okay, you know, in front porch form, hey, folks, this is going out to be heard, here's some pictures to back it up, and here's, you know, we welcome your reaction, unless that's too late, and if things get unraveled, then, then we're a pickle.
My take on this is that, you know, part of the reason why there's this push to have, and I, I have a copy of the schedule on the computer here, too, to, to mention again, the, part of the reason why the, let's see, I have it here somewhere, the purpose is to have all of these sections gone through at least once, by May, basically, so we have this alpha draft, so that we can start some community discussions before we get to the public hearings. The public hearings really are too late.
Yeah.
But the idea is that when you have a complete draft, then maybe we would, maybe we would be able to, to bring in Maya Smith or someone to do some of that shaping so that you have a document that people are going to go, oh, okay, yeah, I'll look at that, rather than the format that we're, we're dealing with right now. And I think that even, yeah, I think it's good, the way it may turn out, where, we have this draft, but here's this other stuff we want you to react to, and what are your thoughts? Because that's what's going to stimulate, you know, the, the kind of boring, not changing stuff, stuff won't engage them like what you're talking about, what Kate's talking about.
But, but that's also, you know, right now, we have a town plan that's like here, and we have regulations that are like here in terms of, you know, their relative, you know, how, how good they are and how effective they are. And so what we're doing is we're making a town plan that's like, like that, and so there's going to be this even bigger gap between, for the regulations. So I think, I, I think we can start to, we could almost treat them as two separate things, and just kind of get, you know, to, we're just making, we're not, we're making the town plan, we're, a lot of what's in the, the town, the town plan now is, we're improving on it. We're not, we're not doing things that are this huge radical departure in many regards. We're just, we're just making it, I think, better. So, so I, I don't think we'll, we'll have to do too, too much to sell it to people, because we're, I mean, it's-
Unless some of this bold-
It's consistent with a lot of what people say they want. And the, the, the thing that is going to be really, really concerning to people is when we start to get into the, and this is how we get there part, this is what, these are, this is the implications of these policies. And that's the part where I think having a lot of people giving their input, and, you know, able to comment, and sort of shape how we get from A to B is going to really be important. But I think, at this point, the policy discussions, I don't think they're going to be super controversial. I mean, do, do, what do you think, Dick? I mean, you've been through any number of these updates.
I'm not really on board with a lot of what you want to do with infill in, in the growth area. I, I live in that area, and I live there because it is what it is now. And I don't look forward to having infill where someone could put a secondary structure in right next to my backyard. That doesn't appeal to me, and I don't think it appeals to a, a lot of other people. The other thing is, when we did the, the original, where we created the input to do the rural area, we already rezoned the growth area. So that's why I was, I brought the comment earlier about, let's figure out how many lots there are available in the growth area right now. So I, to make a new reg without knowing that seems a little super seamless, a little bit ahead of itself. And then I have an idea, too, about, you know, we keep talking about the five-acre zone in the rural district, but the five acres doesn't mean that you have a five-acre lot.
Five acres of developable-
Five acres of developable land, but if you do a PUD, and you could take O'Briens, what's that, O'Brien, the one up on the hill?
Which O'Brien?
The one up on the hill.
The Autumn Hill or?
The one up, beyond, just beyond Spear on the right.
Yeah, Autumn Hill.
Autumn Hill, yeah. If you look at that, they've developed that, and it's a, a two-acre, two-and-a-half-acre lots, with a large, large meadows that are, have been conserved. So it's, it's, you know, I think about that, and then I think about the meadow that's down lower, down by the bridge, the one that all the discussion has been on about putting in more intense development to relieve development in the rest of the rural area, and I don't, I just don't buy that argument. It's just more development. And the other part of that aspect is that, to put intense development in there, that's an area that's already been, I'm, I'm not sure who made the, the remark about it, but it's not a walkable neighborhood. It's not close enough to the village to be considered the walkable neighborhood that we, you look for, for heavier development. So I see that, as it's zoned right now, there's no sewer up there, and I don't think there should be, but not to increase density. However, if somebody wanted, if the O'Briens wanted to build, I think it was 28 houses was, the way they had plotted it out was septic, acceptable septic. If there were a way to create a lot and allow them to put 28 houses on it in a two- and three-acre density and conserve the rest of the land, I wouldn't be opposed to just letting them use sewer for that development and then put the rest of it in conservation. That's how I see a, a better way of developing that particular area.
I think the, the conclusion that I'm hearing, anyway, is that we definitely need to talk this through a bit more.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're definitely over time.
Right, right.
There's some really good points being made all the way around. So, yeah, I mean, maybe we do a, another future land use discussion when we have a more full contingent.
We, we are on the, on the schedule, we are, which we're slipping on a bit. We've had a lot of discussion of future land use, it's up for discussion next time. Transportation was up for a sort of check-in and conversation tonight, but that's coming back in the second meeting in March. But next time, according to the schedule, if we kind of consider growth and housing as, you're not, no one, if everyone's had a chance to look at those sections, and they've been marked up, and nothing more is being considered, then you would be looking at future land use, coming back with historic and culture, and this is where a very significant first-time discussion of natural resources would take place.
Yeah, and then maybe this discussion doesn't happen now. I mean, we're, we're going toward updating the section, not creating all the regulations now. But, yeah, could have some good discussion. Are, are we, at least in terms of tonight being over, can we move on to, can we close out this discussion and move on to the update?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't really have anything for updates of my, my own to share with you.
Can we move on to-
But if commissioners have updates.
The only thing is, I do have one other area that I wanted to do something with form-based zoning, and I have a proposal for smaller lots that I'd like to get into the discussion. Basically, on financing, it would be for four units. And if you have a lot that is small, I don't know how many small lots we have in form-based zoning, I haven't looked at them in quite a while, but if you have lots that are, say, only duplex size, this proposal would be for, to allow four units of mixed use. And the reason I came to this, some reading the other day, conventional financing for four units subdivision, if you live in a, is, you can get 30-year conventional mortgage. If you have a mixed use, you can do a 203B mixed use, which allows a mix of, of commercial and residential, providing that the owner lives on, on the property.
But, well, and I also, I mean, I want to understand this, but I also want to be realistic. Are we, I mean, is this-
Well, the proposal is to develop these smaller lots to get a boost to go, to get growth in that area. The whole idea of this is, so, these are lots that may not be big enough for a four unit at this point, but maybe that's the kind of thing we can do to get apartments or small condos and mixed use in that area, too.
And you're talking about the Route 7 quarters, the year-
I'm talking about the Route 7 quarter, form-based zoning, for the smaller lots that might not otherwise be eligible to-
So we know that we want to have a discussion about form-based zoning so we can close out the edits from what we had. I mean, is that something that we can-
That's something I want to include into that.
...factor into that conversation? Yeah.
Okay, so make sure that when we do schedule that, that you can share whatever articles or what have you that you were reading, so that we can have a context for it. Because when you say a small lot, the-
Well, that's the thing, I need to look, I just kind of read it the other day, and then I caught something this afternoon that reminded me of it. So I would like to see how many small lots we're actually talking about.
Okay, yeah, help us, help us understand what that is, and then we can-
All right.
Map them.
And, and we want to make sure I don't turn into a pumpkin very shortly.
Okay.
All right, so then, Commissioner, questions and comments? I was just going to point out quickly that I, I did go with Judy Raven to the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Municipal Day, and the energy workshop actually was, was really good, and we'll have some references to some of those things in the energy section.
Great.
I will just highlight that the town of Hartford actually made room in the budget and hired an energy coordinator, which was really interesting, and there were a lot of things associated with that that benefit in the long run. All right, so is there any other business?
I just want to mention, I've emailed out notices for different, other training opportunities, if people are interested in those, and you want to attend, but you're not inclined to do the registration fee, let me know. We've covered or reimbursed for those sorts of things, or if I send out any of those training opportunities and you just want to know more, don't hesitate to ask.
Excellent. Yeah, it's usually not for lack of interest, it's more-
Yeah, and then, on, on the energy note, I did read something this morning about, all the work we're doing on the energy section of the plan is so that we have the elevated consideration during the Section 248 process. I learned about a bill that's been introduced, it's probably not going to go anywhere, but it would grant that elevated consideration without doing anything special.
Hmm.
So-
Well, then, yeah.
It probably won't go anywhere, although, you know, watch, you do all the work minimum.
Yeah, right.
I don't think it's going to.
All right, so on that note, motion to adjourn?
Some of it.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Is that?
Yeah.
All right, so moved by Kate, seconded by Susanna.
All in favor?
Any adjourn? We all in favor?
We have to all vote, too.
All right, all right. Well, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.